Good evening, welcome to the May 2nd, 2019 Board of Education meeting. At this time, I would like to ask Dwan Craft to lead us in the invocation.
Thank you. Who packed your parachute? Sometime in the daily challenges that life gives us, we miss what is really important. We may fail to say hello, please or thank you, congratulate someone on something wonderful that has happened to them, give them a compliment, or just do something nice for no reason. Charles Plum, a U.S. Naval Academy graduate, was a jet pilot in Vietnam. After seventy-five combat missions, his plane was destroyed by a surface-to-air missile. Plum ejected and parachuted into enemy lines, lands. He was captured and spent six years in a communist Vietnamese prison. He survived the ordeal and now lectures on lessons learned from that experience. One day when Plum and his wife were sitting in a restaurant, a man at another table came up and said, "You're Plum. You flew fighter jets, jet fighters in Vietnam from the aircraft carrier Kitty Hawk. You were shot down." "How in the world did you know that?" asked Plum. "I packed your parachute," the man replied. Plum gasped in surprise and gratitude. The man pumped his hand and said, "I guess it worked." Plum assured him, "It sure did. If your chute hadn't worked, I wouldn't be here today." Plum couldn't sleep that night, thinking about that man. Plum says, "I kept wondering what he might have looked like in a Navy uniform, a white hat, a bib in the back, and bell-bottom trousers. I wondered how many times I might have seen him and not even said good morning, how are you, or anything, because you see, I was a fighter pilot and he was just a sailor." Plum thought of the many hours the sailor had spent on a long wooden table in the bowels of his ship, carefully weaving the shrouds and folding the silks of each chute, holding in his hands each time the fate of someone he didn't know. Now Plum asks his audience, "Who's packing your parachute?" Everyone has someone who provides what they need to make it through the day. Plum also points out that he needed many kinds of parachutes when his plane was shot down over enemy territory. He needed his physical parachute, his mental parachute, his emotional parachute, and his spiritual parachute. He called on all these supports before reaching safety. His experience reminds us all to prepare ourselves to weather whatever storms lie ahead. As you go through this week, this month, this year, recognize people who pack your parachutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Craft. Now I'd like to call Principal Kelly Flora to the podium to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and she's also heading up the school spotlight for Jarvisburg Elementary.
I have two friends that are coming up.
I have two friends that are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Poppy Wright and Jake Martin. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. It is our pleasure to be here tonight. And Ms. Craft, when you were talking about parachute packers, these are my people. These people pack my parachute every day. So I would like my staff to stand up and be recognized because they have really pulled together to, in all things, not just tonight, but in all things. So, staff, will you please stand up so I can recognize you, please? We have Ms. Leann Heflin, we have Chelsea Eves, we have Emily McDonald, we have Molly Parker, Lori Grothman, Lauren Dibble, and my Assistant Principal, Mr. Kevin Goins, who's not going to stand up. But also, I would like to take a moment and thank my amazing parents and students for coming out tonight. It speaks volumes about Jarvisburg and how devoted everyone is here. So, parents, thank you. Students, thank you. Tonight for our spotlight, we decided we're going to do something a little differently. We are going to do an interactive spotlight. So you all are going to get to participate in our spotlight tonight, which I know makes you very excited. We're very excited. Okay, so I'm going to stop talking and I'm going to turn the presentation over to a phenomenal EC teacher and our current Teacher of the Year, Ms. Lauren Dibble.
Right here?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I first want to start off by saying, thank you for having us, and it's a great opportunity for us to take a little time to show you what we're doing at our school. This year, between our sit team and staff, we felt there was a big need for, a way for us to better our social and emotional skills, as well as support mental health for all of our students. So through a lot of collaboration with peers and other schools, we found the Zones of Regulation. And this is a program that's designed to help students understand and recognize their own feelings, as well as learning the strategies they need to help them self-regulate those feelings. So, and this is a program that we found that was, would benefit all students, not just one specific type of student, and it can also be catered through all grade levels, K through 12. So, at our school, each day, our students use what we call like a clip system, and there's different zones. Each day, they take their name and they put themselves in the zone they think they're in, which is a great way for them to identify how they're feeling. It's a great way for staff to understand how our kids are feeling, because that opens that line of communication, so we can better educate our kids, which is a whole entire goal. So, we have some kids from, I'm nervous, we have some students from our school here, and they're going to give you a little more in-depth about those specific zones.
Hi, I am Jacob Flora, and this, in the green zone, I am feeling focused, motivated, and happy. I do my best work in the green zone. It is important to strive to be in this zone, but it's okay to have other feelings.
Hi, I'm Jake Martin.
I am Poppy Wright.
And this sun, I'm distracted, it's hard to do my work.
When I am in this zone, I can be frustrated or silly. To move out of yellow, I can take a walk or take deep breaths.
Hi, I am Nolan Lewis.
Hi, I am Amelia Lewis. In this zone, I am angry and having a hard time. I have gone from frustrated to mad. It's hard to get my work done.
It is okay to be in the red zone, but I need to do things to help me move out of the zone. I can take a walk, talk to someone, or go to a cool-down spot.
Hi, I am Logan Barr.
And I'm Farrah Barr.
In this zone, I'm feeling sad, sick, or tired. It's hard to do work in this zone because I feel down.
It is okay to be in this, be in this blue zone, but to move out, I can ask for a hug or talk to someone.
We've made some clips that represent each of you. Please place the clip there. At the zone that you're feeling right now. Thank you for your time.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, so I told you this part was going to be interactive, so here comes the fun. So we have made clips for each of you, and we are going to ask you to put your clip on what zone you're feeling right now before the board meeting begins. Ms. Etheridge, we have a sunshine for you, because we know how much you, your busy schedule, you love your vacation and your sunshine. So, could you please, I have an assistant, take this to Ms. Etheridge, please? Dr. Dobney, we know how much you love to golf, so your clip is a golf ball. Dr. Dobney, will you raise your hand so we can?
How about that?
I thought you were going to put me in the O-zone.
Ms. Rose, we have a house for you, because, in case you didn't know, Ms. Rose also does real estate, so we made you a house. Mr. Kradic, you have apple orchards, from what I understand, so we made you a giant apple.
Sweet.
Thank you.
That's so cute.
Ms. Craft, we made you a beautiful seashell for your lovely beach and seashell collections.
Yeah, sweet. Right here, baby.
Mr. Stefanik, we gave you the big Superman S for superintendent. And we cannot forget about our high school friends. We have JP Knapp and Currituck High School clips for you all.
Oh, wow.
Ms. Jones, I'm sorry. Okay.
Zones of Regulation.
Walk around, you can just slip where you feel like you are.
Oh, okay.
And we're going to share the results when you're done.
Yep.
Tell me what blue is?
Sand.
Oh, I'm not sad.
Get in the red, Janet. Get in the red.
Hi, how are you?
How are you, Molly?
I'm not bad.
I know. I would have got it.
Oh, God.
I had one of them, I'm pretty sure.
Fast reading.
Do we have the results? Are the results in? Now, we will leave this board, we will leave this board up for you throughout the meeting, so at any point, if you feel like you need to move your clip, we will happily help you, and we can give you strategies to get you back into the green zone. All you have to do is ask.
We leave that work with us.
We certainly appreciate that, because we will probably be moving it around in the course of the year.
Well, on behalf of Jarvisburg Elementary School, thank you all for your time today. We appreciate it. Have any questions for us, or is there any questions about the Zones of Regulation?
Zones of Regulation, I love it. No, what a, what a...
So where do they get to take a walk? They can go to the hallway, they can go to another classroom, they can come to the office, you know, get some water, deliver a folder to a teacher, just to get out and kind of move around and change, change the mood a little bit. Good. Y'all did a wonderful job.
How am I supposed to pull that off during the board meeting? So I can get myself to...
It's no questions asked. Children at any time can get up and move their clip, and we, you know, we're not going to call you out or say anything, you can move it at any time.
Just move it at any time. All right, Ms. Flora, if you would, have your students come forward one by one and state their name again.
Sure thing. And if they want a picture, or their parents want a picture of that, now's the time.
Hello, I am Jake Martin.
I'm Jacob Flora.
I'm Nolan Lewis.
I'm Farrah Barr.
Amelia Lewis.
I'm Poppy Wright.
I'm Logan Barr.
Great job. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Sure.
You want to go up front? Yeah, she wants to go.
Yeah, we don't have to jump on her.
No, no.
No, no. All right. Is it a picture, picture opportunity? Cheers for that. I think I lost it. Yeah, the wrong shirt. She wore it in the back and then tied it. All right, well, I'm going to every picture, so maybe I can... All right, splash on in. Drink on in. Don't look there, Peachy. Come on, 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 Kelly. All right, one. I'm sorry. Hey, come on, you little sassy. Good job. Can't see you. Hold on, can't we see Molly? I can see you guys. Thanks, y'all. I found the purple shell. Thanks again. Y'all have a good evening. Good night. She really is.
So cute. Poppy and Peaches.
She grabbed her hand and she goes, "Where are we going?" The little one.
Where are we staying? Boy, we should have known how to clear a room, don't we? Good night. Yeah, yeah. We know how to clear a room. Okay, now we need approval of our agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Agenda is approved. Next, we have the public comments session. We have Denise Fallon that has signed up, representing JP Knapp, as our principal at JP Knapp. Denise?
Thank you, and I think Mallory's going to join me. So, of course, we came back from spring break, and it's a fast downhill slide at JP Knapp. Graduation at COA is next Wednesday, and then we graduate May 23rd, exams in between, senior recognition, underclass, we've got a lot going on. So the list that the board members, student board members will share is extensive, and there were a few additional things that I thought needed a little special attention, so that's why Mallory is joining me here tonight, just to share a few things. So first of all, the Jewish community of the Outer Banks will honor several Knapp students who won first, second, and third place in an essay contest. We're really excited about that. I think I picked up the wrong thing, but Justice Holly was our number-one winner on that essay contest. We're really excited, and so I'm hoping to, I know we do the first board spotlight in August, we'll bring those students back, but I just wanted to say a few words about Mr. Chuck Martin and the work he does in his English class to teach students about the Holocaust, and I think that in itself really helped so that those students could really write essays. And again, we won all three places, so we'll bring those students back in August, but I just wanted to give a shout-out to Mr. Martin. Those students have not been recognized yet by that organization on the Outer Banks, so they'll do that Saturday evening, and then we'll be able to officially announce all those winners, so we're really excited about that. The second thing I wanted to talk about was, so for several years, Knapp has been recognized as one of the best high schools in America by U.S. News &amp; World Report, and so I got an announcement this week that, again, we are recognized for that, and that's really exciting for us. That's based on graduation rate, performance on standardized state tests, and also preparedness for college, which, that part, when you really look at the data and the breakdown on how they determine whether you're one of the best, all of our students taking all those COA courses don't even factor in. So I can't imagine where we would be if that counted for us in that, because they just look at AP classes and we don't teach those. So ironically, we're one of the best, and to me, what we're really best at is not even part of that equation, so we're real excited about that, and I'll share that with staff tomorrow. As we have a brief meeting, it's one of our Fridays, that they have individual planning. Again, they're trying to get all that stuff in with students at the end of the year, and so I'll share that with them tomorrow before I let them go to do their thing with students. And then, on another note, we have another important event going on next week that Mallory's going to share a little bit with you. We like to have lots of fun at Knapp at the end of the semester.
Okay, so, with the permission of Superintendent Mark Stefanik and Principal Ms. Denise Fallon, JP Knapp Early College will change its mascot from Spartans to the Fightin' Gulls for the week of May 6th to celebrate Seagull Fest. This will be the third Seagull Fest sponsored by JP Knapp Student Government Organization during the last six years. As always, the goal of the festival is to celebrate the ingenuity and tenacity of the native bird, and to generate lots of fun for students.
So we'll have four days of seagull festivities and just all kinds of crazy stuff going on, so we're really excited about that. The first year the students did that, they came to Mr. Bass Night-Night and said, "You know, we want to do this," and we're like, "What are you talking about? What? What?" They're like, "Well, you know, the seagull is the most misunderstood bird on the planet." And I was like, "Well, okay, we just got to get the word out, Ms. Fallon." So anyway, it's turned into a lot of fun for our students, a good release, again, right before we roll into exams.
Do you have shirts this year?
We do have shirts, really excited about those, and we also had a student that designed our poster.
Oh, it's beautiful.
It is.
Chip designed a poster.
Chip German did, and it's really, really neat, so. We have lots of fun activities, I think Tuesday is where you dress up like the tacky tourist.
Yes, you dress up like a tourist that has been attacked by a seagull.
By a seagull, I love it. I love it, yeah.
Yes, so lots of fun to finish up our semester. So with that, thank you for letting us share a little bit about what's going on at Knapp.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we'd like to recognize our departing student, school board members, Colin Coffey and Kealan Hartman. We are going to miss y'all so much. We've enjoyed working with you.
Woo-hoo! Presented to Colin Coffey, student board member, JP Knapp Early College, from 2017 to 2019. Appreciation for proudly serving and representing the students of Currituck County Schools, presented by the Currituck County Board of Education, MACAC, in 2019. Woo-hoo! Very good.
Can I get a picture with him, too?
The parents.
Just turns the way. I know. She's got my glasses. I'm sending my school. Took three of them. Wow, she did that. I thought I could turn it sideways, and it didn't work to turn it sideways.
Presented to Kealan Hartman, student board member, Currituck County High School, 2017 to 2019. Appreciation for proudly serving and representing the students of Currituck County Schools, presented by the Currituck County Board of Education, MACAC, in 2019.
Woo! Woo-hoo! Sure, absolutely. We can do whatever we want. Yeah. Only Kealan. Yeah. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
There you go.
There you go. Are a knight and a Spartan. Oh, God. Of course, a Spartan's a purple one. Yeah.
Seagull now.
Yeah. The shirts. What do they have to do? Is something wrong with it?
Don't know. Just for board information, we had a little bit of an excitable engraver, and they put in an extra letter in Colin's first name, and so we've got a replacement plate to put on the plaque, and when we get the correct plaque, or correct name on there, we'll give this plaque back.
It's okay, Kealan, we're one and one now, because I remember the first meeting, they spelled his name wrong.
Yes, that's what she was even, even works out.
So he got the first meeting, I got the last one.
There you go.
That's what it is.
Colin and Kealan, I'd just like to say that I have really enjoyed working with both of you, and your opinions have been very valuable to us, and you've often presented things that we had not looked at in that capacity, so we value your opinions. And tell, tell me where you're going to school next year? Have we decided?
I'm going to Slippery Rock University, it's in Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania, okay. And any idea what you might major in?
Safety management.
Okay. Good for you, Kealan.
And I'm going to UNC Charlotte.
Okay.
And I'm majoring in computer engineering.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, good luck to both of you.
Y'all will succeed in life, there's no doubt. And I've enjoyed being with you and working with you on the board.
Every minute.
Thank you, guys. It's been a wonderful experience being on the board as well.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you as well.
Best of luck to both of you. Thank you. We'll try to get the plaque back to you before...
Before graduation.
Before the seagull days are over, and then we'll be all set to go.
That's perfectly fine.
He's thinking about going over there and moving his marker.
That's right. I love it. To man.
I was going to take mine to red, because I was embarrassed and angry that the plate was spelled wrong.
Will they join us for the next meeting we're having in May?
We're not having another one in May.
That's just a... We'll see them at graduation.
Yeah.
I can't believe we're, I can't believe we're setting them.
Oh, the special meeting?
The special meeting.
Oh.
Maybe.
They could.
We'll let them know.
We're going to do another little meeting, just for you.
All right, item F, interim budget resolutions.
Wait, student board member reports.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, student board member reports, thank you. Kealan?
Readings, Board. So first off, I will start, or I'll start with Moyoc Elementary. MES plans to finish the year strong in May. Our Panthers are involved from everything, or in everything, from butterfly habitats and chicks, to zoo field trips and business fairs. Important upcoming end-of-the-year events include reading EOG on the 29th of May, the math EOG on the 30th, and the science EOG on the 31st. Our school-wide Fun Day will take place Monday, June 3rd, followed by awards assemblies and grade-level picnic celebrations the rest of the week. And then next is Jarvisburg Elementary. We are coming back from break with a firm focus on the last few weeks of school. Tomorrow, May 3rd, 2019, JES will celebrate its third nine weeks, PBIS students that have shown exceptional behavior...
...will be Friday, May 24th with fifth grade science. Uh, on Wednesday, May 29th will be the language arts test and on Thursday, uh, May 30th, it'll be math. Our fifth grade dance will be on the 31st from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Our final PBIS day will be on June 5th with a water slide in the courtyard to celebrate positive behavior. Awards assemblies happening at CES will include on June 3rd pre-K, June 6th kindergarten at 9:00, first and second at 10:15, third and fourth at 11:00, and the fifth grade ceremony at 7:00 PM. And so I pass it off to Sydney.
Hello, I'd like to start with Shawboro Elementary. Shawboro will host Field Day this Friday, May 3rd. Come out and join us in friendly competitions and fun. We need pro- pro- proctors for EOGs. If you're willing to volunteer your time, please contact the school. EOG testing for SES will be May 29th, ELA, May 30th, math, and May 31st, fifth grade science. We are scheduling end of the year awards programs and celebrations. Please check our webpage calendar and Facebook for updates. Next week, May 6th through 10th is Teacher Appreciation Week. Have your child make a special card to show their teachers how much they appreciate all they have learned this year. I'll now move on to Greg's Elementary School. The end of the school year is quickly approaching and the Mallards are staying busy. Several of our grade levels will be participating in field trips this month. May 6th through the 10th is Teacher Appreciation Week. We'll have a book fair going on that week. May 7th is Family Coding Night. Teachers and students are busy preparing for our end of the year benchmarks and EOGs. Our last PBIS celebration will be on May 24th. Field days will be held on June 4th and 5th. Pre-K graduation will be June 4th at 9:00. Our kindergarten promotion will be held on June 6th at 9:00. Fifth grade promotion will be held June 7th at 12:30 with a reception and dance to follow. End of the year awards will be held June 8th at 8:30 for our first and second grade and 9:30 for the third and fourth. I'll now pass it on to Colin.
I will start with Knott's Island Elementary. On May 3rd, the students will see a demonstration of the Currituck County Sheriff's K-9 Crew. Our scholastic dynamite book fair will be held May 6th through May 13th. The Wizard of Oz will be performed by the KIES Play Club at 6:00 on May 17th. Admission is free, but a donation to help the Knott's Island Food Bank will be collected at the door. The last day of preschool is May 20th with our graduation on May 22nd. EOG testing will take place the week of May 31st and the end of the year assembly will be on June 7th at 9:30. Next, I will go on to Currituck County Middle. Things have been busy at CCMS and there is no sign of a slowdown. We had about 12 students participate in the Special Olympics at the PCHS on May 10th. The week before spring break, over 250 students participated on our Attitude Award. A field trip, lost treasure, mini golf in Kill Devil Hills, and our seventh grade course students toured our feeder elementary schools. On Tuesday, May 7th, we will be hosting a parent EOG night. Registration will begin at 5:45 and sessions will begin at 6:00. We look forward to helping our parents understand middle school EOGs. We are excited to host our rising fifth graders for their middle school tour next week, or next Wednesday. Our barbecue fundraiser is in full swing. Orders are due by May 8th and pickup is on May 17th. Our band concert will be on May 16th at 6:30 and our chorus concert will be on May 22nd at 6:30. Come out and support the arts. Finally, on May 24th, we have, we will be having a motivational speaker to pump up our kids for testing week. Next, I will move on to Moyauk Middle. Students from Miss Catherine Harrison's, Harrison's class participated in Special Olympics. It was a great day and had a ball. CTE staff Harley Bartolada and Janine Purrier?
Purrier.
Okay. Have taken students on local field trips to COA to learn about the health science careers. Students had the opportunity to explore and take advantage of hands-on activities while on campus. Elementary school tours have begun. We have changed them this year, allowing for students to be immersed in classrooms, meeting with teachers, and shadowing students in the building. We were g- given great feedback by the staff at Shawboro so far. MMS's Science Olympiad traveled to Raleigh over spring break. We took fourth place in herpetology. Uh, we are gearing up to celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week, May 6th to 10th. Our PTO has helped plan this week and events, and all events for staff. May 10th is our eighth grade formal. May 13th is the spring band concert at 6:30 and the FFA banquet will be on May 23rd at 6:00 PM. And I'll pass it on to Mallory.
All right. I'm gonna start with JP NAP Early College. It's a busy month at JP NAP. COA exams are underway and COA graduation is scheduled for May 8th with 84% of NAP graduates finishing with an associate's degree or certification. Way to go Spartans. May 6th through 10th, we will celebrate our infamous Seagull Festival and Teacher Appreciation Week to finish up the semester. May 9th, we welcome our incoming freshmen to JP NAP 101 meeting and 101 meet and greet starting at 5 o'clock with staggered start times. May 11th, the JP NAP PTA will host its annual Scholarship Scramble Golf Tournament at the Carolina Club in Grandi. We are still accepting players, donations, and whole sponsorships. Join us for a day of fun to support our students. Check-in starts at 11:30 with a 12 o'clock tee time. The JP NAP Underclassmen Awards are May 13th at 2:30 PM in the gym. The Senior Washington DC Trip is scheduled for May 14th through 16th. JP NAP exams start Friday, May 17th, which ea- with each day being an early release day for students. Senior graduation events, this one I can't pronounce, Colin say it, back laureate?
Back laureate.
Is on May 19th at 6:00 PM in the Media Center. The Senior Recognition Ceremony, May 21st at 6:00 PM in the JP NAP Gym. And graduation is May 23rd at 7:00 PM in the COA Auditorium. For Currituck County High, hold on. May 6th through May 10th, as you know, is devoted to National Teacher Appreciation Week, where we hope to extend our thanks to our dedicated teachers. Joining the administrative team in honoring our Knights faculty are student organizations, including our student government and yearbook staff. Kudos to the 12 Knights invited to attend the All-State Chorus in Charlotte this past weekend. Under the direction of Tiffany Arbogast, two of our students, Allison Henry and Matthew Weeks, were selected as soloists. Four of our young people earned the opportunity to participate in the statewide Science Olympiad in Raleigh this past weekend. This past weekend as well, including Sidney Gardner, Kealan Hartman, Caleb Kite, and Caleb Nor. The standout CCHS team, in fact, earned a top-six performance in Herpetology, the branch of zoology devoted to the study of reptiles and amphibians. Kudos to Taylor McCarthy, who was elected President of the FBLA Eastern Region, Savannah Webb, who was chosen President of FFA Northeast Region, and Abby Rose selected as FFA Northeast Reason, Region Vice President. Our annual FFA banquet is slated for May 10th. Even as we speak, Jasmine Gorney, Anita Lynn, Garrett Hartman, Matthew Lieberman, Gentawat Manicorn?
That's right.
Merrick Sanders and Andrew Sarnowski are among those, under the guiding hand of math teacher, Mr. Rolls, competing in the NCTM State Math Competition at Fayetteville State University. We just received word that both Jasmine and Merrick placed in the top 10 in all of the state of North Carolina.
Wow.
We will be celebrating with our seniors, the proud members of the Class of 2019, at the Currituck County High School Prom, held on our campus and slated for Saturday, May 18th. Our annual Senior Day and picnic occurs on May 22nd and Senior Recognition Day follows on May 23rd. Our annual spring choral and band concerts are scheduled for May 9th and May 14th respectively. Interscholastic playoffs for the spring semester commenced this week and we look forward to sharing their success in postseason play imminently. That is it.
Thank you very much. All right, and next item, item A, interim budget resolution, we need action.
Yes, this is just a, um, an action item from the interim budget that was proposed by Ms. Trussell at the work session. Due to her, uh, health condition, she wasn't able to be at the, tonight's meeting. So as the board takes action, it gives us the ability to, uh, take care of financial matters between now and September when the board approves the official budget for next year.
Okay, I made a motion that we approve the interim budget resolution for next fiscal year.
I second that.
I, I'd just like to have a little discussion real quick.
Well, you had to have a second first.
Yes, ma'am. I apologize. Um, I wanted to ask more, 'cause I, I failed to think about it earlier, but I know that there was a, um, situation where, talk about, I guess, giving the teachers, was it $400 for the classroom expenses at the state level?
Oh, from the state, yes.
I mean, that would come out of our budget. So what I'm saying is if we approve this interim budget and something like that, we obviously have to come back and make some changes.
Yeah, what, what happens is when we actually make the, the annual budget official, uh, in September or October, um, then what happens is, um, all the accounts that have to be adjusted get adjusted at that time.
Okay, including like if we had some discrepancies or we wanted to change some line items on the capital budget as well?
Yes, well, once the, um... My time's up. Uh, uh, no, uh, once, um, uh, once we get the allocation, uh, capital outlay allocation from the county, then, uh, what we've typically done is inside of that amount of money, we can make adjustments to the, the capital outlay projects. If something comes back in under our budgeted amount, we've got some leftover money to take care of some other things.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Budget is approved, interim budget. All right, now, next we have field trips. Superintendent Stefanik.
Yeah, just a couple of field trips coming up here, uh, well, one at the tail end of the school year and one over the summer. JP NAP is taking a senior trip to Washington DC, uh, here in the next couple of weeks, uh, May 14th through the 16th. And JP NAP, uh, FBLA National Leadership Conference, uh, in San Antonio, Texas, uh, end of June, uh, up on, through just about the 4th of July.
Okay. All right, consent agenda, we need action on our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I would like to discuss an item on this capital outlay budget. I'm only seeing one item that's got a, a difference of price. Could you elaborate on that, Superintendent Stefanik?
Which item?
Um, that would be the greenhouse.
Okay.
It's $40,000 on one and $100 on the other.
Right.
There may be other items that have different prices and I just missed them.
The, the revised budget, uh, again, y- you've got the draft budget, that's the one with the red and yellow, um, items on it. The revised budget, which is the one we're acting on tonight, is the one without, uh, anything in the cut, um, line item. Uh, in the proposed capital outlay budget from a month ago, the one with the red boxes, um, $40,000 was put up for the greenhouse because there was an expectation that we would be partnering, uh, with the county commissioners for the remainder of the budget. Uh, when the board, um, said that they would like us to request the entire amount, um, for all of the recommended items, we rolled the greenhouse up to $100,000 for the price of the greenhouse that, um, was quoted. And then any, um, demolition of the current greenhouse and any site preparation that would need to take place, uh, we just rounded up and we figured somewhere around $100,000 to take care of all the rest of those, um, items. So we put the entire piece in there. If the commissioners would, uh, make, uh, an allocation specific to the greenhouse, then we could subtract that off of this, uh, capital outlay budget and, um, if it's inside of the allocation we get for capital outlay, then we could put those dollars to something else.
So is this, this is the one we're sending? We're sending one?
Yes, we're sending the one with all of the requested items on it, uh, so the commissioners can see the full, um, listing of, uh, what, uh, either buildings or the district believe are the needs of the district.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Mr. Krotik?
Yes, ma'am. Um, thank you. Uh, I'd, I'd also like to make sure that, um, when we send this over, that we include, um, a numeral value to antiquate the cost-saving measures from any equipment, um, that is gonna be...
Upgraded.
Uh, energy efficient or cost-saving. And secondly, I would like, um, the, um, I'm losing my train of thought, I apologize. Um, oh, the two items that they have on their agenda that they might be funding tomorrow, if so, on the, uh, I would like those line item and such that they could recognize if they had already acted on them or that yet they were on their, I just want them, so that they, if they act tomorrow and we send it over, it doesn't seem like an overlap, they might not catch.
I, I thought you said you were gonna wait until you saw what they were gonna do.
Right, I, I, I have four items that I was gonna ask the board after you approved this listing tonight, if you would give me permission to revise those items off of our capital outlay, if they already act on them.
If they've acted on them.
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to cut down the confusion, but thank you.
Right, yeah, so yeah, we don't wanna look like we're asking for something twice.
That they already?
Right, yeah. So the four items are the two HVAC, um, projects at the elementary schools, the, the wall repair at Currituck Middle, and the greenhouse.
Okay.
Uh, and if those come off, that would be very close to, um, $400,000 off of our request list, um, in capital outlay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Again, just for the record, that was for the whole consent agenda, right? Not just the capital outlay listing, that vote that just happened?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, we have a scheduled work session on June 27th at the NAP Professional Learning Center. And we also have our Board of Education meeting that night, June 27th, here at the Historic Courthouse, and the time is to be determined. Uh, we may have another meeting in a couple of weeks, but that will be finalized probably tomorrow or Monday at the latest. At this time, I'd like to ask for board member comments, starting with Mr. Krotik.
Um, well, I hope everybody had a happy Easter. Um, I had, um, did have the, uh, pleasure of attending a Easter egg hunt with, uh, Knott's Island Elementary School. Uh, let's see, it was, uh, first grade and second grade.
That was fun.
That was nice. Um, and, um, I did a little traveling and, um, that's about it for me, I'm sorry to say. I've been, uh, working outside quite a bit and enjoying the weather and I hope everybody else has. But anyhow, um, I turn it back over to you and God bless Currituck County.
Thank you. Ms. Rose?
I, it's been busy, but I did get a chance to go see the musical, Guy, Guys and Dolls, and hats off to Buddy White and all the students and hard work that went into that. I popped into the prom that JP NAP held and wow, what an evening. I mean, they looked amazing, the, uh, the venue was beautiful, lots of decorations, well-behaved kids, faculty, I can't, it was just wonderful, very nice. Um, I attended AG Day and what a collaborative effort that was between the teachers and the students and the community groups that went and put that on for our third grade students to teach them a little bit about AG. That was a great event. I happened to get this week to, uh, Currituck County High School baseball game where they beat First Flight, one to nothing. And they are down there now, I hope beating First Flight again. Um, and if they win that, I, it's my understanding they will win the conference. So, good luck to them. Um, next week's Teacher Appreciation Week, so I'd just like to say thank you to all of our faculty and staff members for all they do on a daily basis for our students. And I have one more thing I wanna talk about, and this is really an important thing. It's an event coming up Saturday, June 1st at the high school, sponsored by the Science Club. Sydney may know about this. It's called Walk Support Glow. And this event was created in memory of Ty Chalk, one of our former Currituck County High School graduates, and it is designed to bring awareness to mental health and suicide prevention. Contact me if you need a form to fill out. If you fill the form out, you get a T-shirt. If you don't fill the form out, you can come join us anyway. June 1st, 7 to 10.
Okay, Dr. Dobney?
Yes, I attended, uh, Gates Baseball and Softball Game, which we won both. We won the girls softball game like 21 to nothing.
(laughing).
And, uh, let's see what else. I attended the high school production, Guys and Dolls. Uh, my car went to the NAP prom.
Ooh, good.
I lent it out to somebody.
(laughing).
Dr. Dobney didn't get invited, went to the prom, so he just sent his car.
I thought I saw your car there.
Well, it was.
And I didn't see you. That's 'cause he wasn't there.
Oh, golly.
Kind of like when it's stolen the show.
Yes, that's right.
You better watch, I'm gonna move my thing over there.
(laughing).
What's the one, what is it, Prestor? Oh.
Prestor.
Okay, uh, I don't think any of the rest of the board members know this, but I wrote a letter of recommendation to a former athletic director and basketball coach of ours, Robert Woodley. Uh, he's been nominated to enter the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Hall of Fame.
Awesome.
So, I hope he gets it. He deserves it.
That's true.
And lastly, I'd like to thank Colin and Kealan for everything you've done for the school board and your, uh, timely quality input, and good luck in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Craft?
Yes, um, I went to Knott's Island to their awards assembly and, uh, we, uh, went, I went to AG Day, I bought plants from the Currituck County High School FFA, beautiful plants. Um, and for the last, I think, five years, it might only be four, I've been asked to be the moderator for Battle of the Books for our elementary schools and, um, these, these students blow me away. They, um, two, four, six, I think it's 10 books that they have to read and know the author, and the questions are obscure. I've read some of the books be- from before and it, I wouldn't think I'd be able to answer the questions. They do a fantastic job. Um, Shawboro Elementary School, uh, won and, um, they, you know, it was really, it was really nice. They did a great job. Um, and I also would like to say that it's been a real pleasure to serve on the board with you and we just wish you all the luck in the world in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, did, did you?
No.
Okay. All right, um, I hope everyone had a wonderful, I'm sorry.
Oh, uh, I'd just like to say a few words.
Yes, please.
Seeing, you know, it's a little timely.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
You know, it's been a very unique experience. Uh, thank you for so, you know, doing the application and for selecting me and calling. Yeah. It's been a, it's been an honor and a pleasure.
Well, it's been an honor for us.
For both of us, we've learned a lot of lessons and can take a lot from this opportunity.
Made some really cool new friends.
Yeah, and some, and some new friends.
That's right, not to mention. Okay. Mr. Stefanik?
Yes, I'd like to, um, thank Kealan and Colin too. Uh, first of all, this is a, a, a meeting dedicated to, to you guys as, as you move on. Um, it's, it's interesting to see, um, student board members when they start the process and they come to their first meeting and they're not blinking, uh, and they're, they're just kinda trying to feel their way, you know, uh, in the, in the roles, but, um, this group of, um, representatives and this board, um, has actually, um, utilized, um, the students and these students are confident enough in, in sharing their opinions that they've really added a lot to, uh, uh, board discussions and, uh, and, and given a lot of quality input. And so I appreciate that. That's what I knew of, um, student representatives to board members in the past with districts I've been with in the past, and so it's nice to see that you guys feel comfortable enough sharing your opinions and the board, um, accepts and values what you guys, uh, provide. So, um, we'll, uh, at least in my tenure here, we'll call you guys the, uh, the leader seniors, uh, in that, uh, in that sharing thing, because you guys did a lot of sharing and now Sydney and Mallory's job is to carry that on, uh, as the senior leaders next year. So, uh, thank you and, and congratulations. Uh, next week is, uh, Teacher Appreciation Week, and if you haven't seen it yet, after, uh, George Kuros, uh, came and spoke to the entire district, um, he was talking about, you know, uh, doing things differently, trying new, um, educational, um, methods and activities in your classrooms. And so the challenge was, see if you can try something new between the time George Kuros was in the district and the end of the school year, and share some of those exciting things that are going on in your classroom on Twitter. Now, since I've loaded the Twitter on my phone, I couldn't tell you what the Twitter hashtag was because it's just there. Um, so what is it, Renee?
Hashtag currituckk12.
Okay. Hashtag currituckk12. If you go on there, there is like a never-ending stream of photos and, and sharing, uh, pieces from teachers across the district, and you can just get a, a flavor for really, um, the quality things that are going on, uh, district-wide from, uh, the Virginia border to the bridge. Uh, and, uh, it's exciting to see, it's exciting to see how our teachers have embraced this challenge, uh, and they're putting a lot of interesting activities out there. And so if you haven't seen it yet, um, and you don't have a Twitter account, learn how to get one, uh, and then, uh, you can go to that hashtag and you can see all the things that the teachers are sharing. It's really exciting.
That's wonderful, yes.
I just wanna say one thing. Um, on that note, um, Ms. Rose and I were talking at, uh, dinner tonight. I still, after being nine years retired, have letters from parents of students that I taught commending me for whatever, talking to me about. And so even if you do nothing else for Teacher Appreciation Week, if you did that for, um, your child's teacher, uh, you don't know how many times they might read it or care about it, so I just like to do that.
Thank you. Yeah, it's kind of a lost art, a, a letter or a note. You know, we're so used to texting or emailing or tweeting, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's one of those things that you keep, or at least I keep them. You know, I have a big basket full of cards and I'm probably a, a hoarder, but other than that, I just love my personal cards.
Judge, you said one last thing. Um, because of the, um, UFLIP thing, uh, presentation tonight and the awards to, uh, Kealan and Colin recognizing their service, um, I moved my tag, uh, to the green.
God.
Uh, and so, uh, I, I, I'm now, uh, I'm now in the green zone.
I didn't see you do that, I guess you are Superman.
Yeah.
That happened to the wall.
That fast, that fast. Sydney caught me, Sydney caught me doing that.
Well, I'm glad we're all, we're all green. That's, that, we're leaving on a, a high note tonight. Um, there again, I hope everyone had a wonderful spring break and, uh, revitalized for the end of the school year. I was able to attend the basketball game at JP NAP and our superintendent has still got it. He ran up and down that court making shots like you wouldn't believe. Um, and they beat the kids. Sorry, sorry, guys. Colin, you did really well.
Yeah, we ended, we ended the kid streak at one. Uh, one, one year in a row.
Cherry picking at the other end.
Oh, yeah? Okay, all right.
Couple of times I was, you're right.
Yeah.
Until they, until they hooked you to me and then you started chasing me around.
There was a couple of times where it was four versus five and we didn't know where the fifth one was and he was at the other end waiting for the ball.
Hey, whatever it takes, whatever it takes, right?
You gotta notice that, you gotta notice that.
Yes. Well, spring is finally here and the school calendar is busting at the seams with events galore. I pulled some of them up today and I think there's something every day. I mean, you just take your pick of where you wanna go, what school you want to attend and, and, uh, so many great activities. Next week, uh, May 6th through the 10th, we are celebrating our teachers and we would love for everyone to write a note of appreciation or even pick some flowers out of your garden and take to, um, some of your teachers, um, your students, your, your, not your student, your child's teacher. Um, I would like to also thank our student board members, Kealan and Colin, for your hard work and your dedication to this board. Few important dates, uh, two to be exact, uh, we have several others, but two to be exact. JP NAP graduation is scheduled for May 23rd at 7:00 PM and Currituck County High School graduation ceremony is scheduled for June 7th.
Did you mention that?
Oh, the Amore Conference, the Amore Conference was a huge success. Um, we had, we had a wonderful attendance, uh, some great young ladies that night and I think I left it at about 11 o'clock that night, but I just get so much out of that, um, just seeing our youth, our, the girls in our community enjoying, uh, each other's company and participating in all of the things that we had going on that night, you know, zumba, meditation, we had an art class, we had a sewing class, and everyone just pulls together and, and makes that a successful, a successful evening. At this time, I'd like to ask if anyone else has anything to say?